Sounds like a lot of healthy conversation out there, but if you don't mind, I'd love to get started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowson? Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Voise?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen, right now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank me, I mean, thank you. The pledge will be led by Councilwoman Margaret Klein.
Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the world.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America.
All right, thank you.
And move to approve the agenda with the amendment of removing from the consent agenda, item 1B2F, and the minutes of the July 13, 2020 regular session as proposed.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made with second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. First up is oral presentations. Kelly, do we have anyone scheduled to speak right now?
We didn't have anyone sign up to speak for oral presentations.
All right, is there anyone in the audience or in private space that wants to speak on non-agenda-related items?
We do have people in the audience that would like to speak.
All right, so if you could take that on, can't see him.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. First, I'd like to have removed from the consent agenda four, five, and six for some explanation. My oral presentation is the booking error at the convention center, in my opinion, should be paid by whomever rented the hall, the management company, being paid $10,000 per month to manage that facility. If they did not observe that there was construction material in that room and rented it in the second place, first place, they ought to be liable for that, not the citizens of Waterloo. I assume that the manager onsite should have consulted with the job superintendent to find out when the hall would be available. None of this communication level, which I read in the paper, between all of us is relevant. He's in charge of that building at all times, because we don't have somebody down there that I know of. The city, citizens' money, has no responsibility for this rental, so explain to me why we take the hit. My understanding is we turned total management over to this outside venue. Thank you. And again, remove four, five, and six for explanation on the consent agenda.
So, Mr. Dreyer, you want to hear about the four, five, and six? You want to hear about the airport?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I got to look at my printed agenda. Four. Wood of construction, airline terminal building. And five is wood for construction at the airport. And then six is purchase of a piece of equipment. But yeah, I just, on the four and five, I want to know whether the airport authority is paying for that, or the citizens are paying for that, or are we sharing the cost? And then six...
So, the airport, how is paid? And then what's your question on number six?
Basically, do we need to spend that kind of money for a new fire truck right now? We're in this dilemma with loss of revenue, et cetera, from COVID. And $660,000 would go towards repairing some of the roads.
Thank you, Mr. Dreyer. All right, before we get to those, any, Mr. Dilavu?
Horace Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I've got a few suggestions for you folks who are elected by the people of Waterloo. We are in tight financial times. As we drive around our city, we see businesses, if lucky, at half, doing half the business they were. We see businesses closing and leaving. And we need to stop spending. We need to stop buying property that we don't have an absolute positive use for. We have bought properties out by the public works. We bought two houses that were decent-looking houses, equal to any of them in the neighborhood. We allowed someone to go in there and take all the salvage out, and now they sit half boarded up and half not boarded up. They look terrible. We've got a house on Williston Avenue we've had for years. Stinks like heck in that house. If you go in the yard, you can smell it. You don't have to go in the house, because you can't get in it. We've just got to stop spending. We've got to start considering downsizing, quit hiring, examine these, see if there isn't some other way to get that job done. Move people around, whatever it takes. We've got to cut down. Stop raising fees. Each time you raise a fee, that hurts the citizens that are out there, those on a fixed income, those on a low income. We've raised the sewer rates and raised the sewer rates, and someone the other day say, "Well, let's just raise the sewer rates some more." Yeah, that's easy money. You don't have to have a referendum. You just go out and raise the rates. But when you got somebody come to you and say, "Hey, I'm not going to be able to make all the rent this month, because I had to pay the water bill," he calls it the water bill, it's really more sewer than anything. It just, we're just breaking the city. There are a lot of people out there that aren't making it. And I urge you to remember, they are the people that elected you. They are the people you're supposed to work for, not the city employees. And this hiring people from 50 miles away? If you got turds and toilet paper coming in your basement, and they call this guy to come in and start up the pump at the end of the block, he said, "I'm only 50 miles away. I'll put my shoes and socks on and be there as soon as I can." Well, that hour or two that you've got to watch that stuff filling up your basement and drowning out your furnace, your water heater, and your washer and dryer, think about that when you hire people from 50 miles away. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dilavu. Yes, sir.
Yes, Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive. Good evening. I wanted to make a comment on last week's meeting. I was in the back area, we had the dividers open, and the people that were calling in remotely, specifically the city employees, it was very difficult to hear what they were saying. When I moved up to the front part of the room, I could hear a little bit better, but it was very difficult to hear them. And a lot of their responses, I didn't get the complete content of them. And I spoke to some people that were watching on television, and they said that the sound quality for those individuals was also very degraded and difficult to understand. So, if I misquote anyone on this, please, I beg forgiveness for that, because I'm going on what I heard and what I've read in the paper since then. In regards to the flooding that has taken place over in the Home Park area, we're getting a lot of mixed information on that as to what happened. We're told that in September, something was done to the overflows that run under Highway 63 into Black Hawk Creek. We've also been told that the city was unaware that these overflows existed until shortly before September. We heard the same thing at Liberty Park about a cap. And the evidence indicates that cap was probably there for 15 years, but there was no record of it until 2017, and we still don't know how that got there. From what I understand, these overflows were similarly capped at Home Park, so the overflow would not go into the creek. The city is saying that they didn't know about that, but now, once they discovered them, once it was discovered, then had to notify the DNR, because that meant that there was raw sewage going into Black Hawk Creek. That's something that needs to be documented. And, but gosh, the city had no idea it was happening before. You know, it's one thing to try to swallow the notion that a cap got put on a pipe that nobody knew about, and nobody knew it was there. But it's another thing to have a pipe, have access to a pipe that runs underneath the four-lane highway, going into a creek, and nobody knew there was overflow going to there? And it was just recently discovered right before September? What was the point of notifying the DNR? Because now we were required to do it. But why was it found then? I say that in Liberty Park, that back however long ago that that was capped off, there used to be a lot of insurance claims on the Ninth Street line that was going down there. And by capping off that overflow into the Ninth Street line, that alleviated that. Those insurance claims have pretty much gone to nothing over there. But on the Eighth Street side, they've continued over and over again, because it was capped off. Something happened that necessitated, that the city felt it was appropriate, to cap off those lines back in September, and not tell these residents as to why. And it was probably to protect people upstream in more important properties. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Obadall. Yes, who would like to speak next?
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Amy Failey. For the record, that's F as in Frank, A-L-E-Y. Read your transcripts, and I was failure on those, so I'd like to get that corrected. 727 Home Park Boulevard. So, the issue, I have questions, actually. So, Mayor, you were supposed to reach out to the governor. My question for that is, what did the governor say? What are their plans to get us help that way? You also said you were going to speak to travelers to see what they could do for us. I want to know what happened in that conversation. And then, based on the transcripts from the last meeting, a lot of stuff was missed by the person who was typing. And it was so unintelligible for certain people that it actually says that in the transcripts. So, not only could we not hear them, but the person who's taking notes couldn't hear them. So, your transcripts are also missing very important information. Dates, things we talked about, oh, it's going to take three months for the model, somehow that didn't manage to end up in the transcripts. So, my other question is, are you purposefully trying to cover your own butts and not help us out? Because that's what it seems like. At this point, it is an intentional, intentional thing that you guys are doing. You've made a choice to do this, and now you're basically putting us all in a situation where we don't know if it'll ever get fixed. I brought up Eighth and Locke last time. Gentlemen, before me brought up Eighth. You said you're trying to fix it for two to three years. I mean, again, how does that make us feel? I'm still going to have to be home every time it rains. So, I'd like those questions answered today, right now. And I would like you to do something, like, do something. We vote for you. We won't vote for you next time, but we voted for you this last time, some of us. So, we need you to do what we voted you in to do, which is to protect us as citizens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, the first kind of, thank you, Mrs. Amy. First and foremost, whether someone votes for me or not, there are some serious issues that need to be taken care of within that system. And whether I'm here or not after next November, we're going to make sure that we continue to solve those problems that you have. And the answer may come after I'm out of here, but we will take every effort to try to solve those problems. Number two, I have not had a conversation with the insurance company. I have had a conversation with the governor's office. I spoke with the Department of Homeland, I think it's called Management. And the 200%, 200% of the poverty line threshold, I found out, was not something that they can unilaterally do. That threshold was put in place by the legislature, so it's not necessarily easy to move right in this circumstance and situation. But I also spoke with Lori Glover from our emergency management. I spoke with operation threshold, and those numbers cannot be moved at this point. The city has to have, city or state, I think it has to have about 500 impacted homes as part of the governor's proclamation. What I was told, that even though it started July 22, or June 22, it's not just that date. I was told by that office that it goes 30 days from the 22, and that they're going to reach out to other local entities to see what level of damage, if it means that 500 household threshold. Overall, within our county, we didn't have enough damage to county and city facilities that will take us over that threshold that we would need to have as well. So, that is what I've researched, as I said I would on that part. But I have not talked to our insurance company yet. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Lori DeVries at 902 Home Park Boulevard. And the only thing that I guess I wanted to ask about is you had said that it starts on June 22, but we first had our major sewage backup on June 9. So, I just want to make sure, I mean, that's when we had the most damage and had to clean everything out. So, just want to make sure, if you're counting, that you still have those two weeks in there. Thank you.
Let's see that last part again, Mr. Rupert.
Oh, if you're counting, you know, like, to get the 500 homes, you know, I guess I'm hoping you will start with June 9 instead of June 22.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? Council?
We have one more individual.
Hi, my name is Ricky Shaver. I live at 727 Home Park Boulevard. I just was wondering if there was any update on the number of homes affected. Last week, Randy Bennett quoted 30 or 40, but the residents here had questioned that. So, wondering if there is an update. And also, Mayor, when you say there weren't 500 homes impacted, I'm just wondering, how do you determine the number of homes that are impacted? I want to make a comment that the room is quite empty today as compared to the last two meetings. And I just wanted to point out that our neighbors are missing, because they're working on their homes and installing backflow preventers. I also wanted to mention that that suggestion of installing a backflow preventer, just for your information, the quote that we received for that was $2,000. We didn't have a ton of damage, but if we wanted to have some security and peace of mind, it would cost us $2,000 to do that. So, if you have that to loan us, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Randy, or anyone, do you know how many to the question? What, I don't know how we count up that number, but how are the, how many, how many do we have as a count that had backups or reached out to the office?
Give me just a second here, so I get the right, because like I said, they're on different dates. But we'll give you the information on the June 22. I'll give you a second.
Mr. Mayor, I couldn't hear Mr. Bennett's response.
Oh, give me just a second, ma'am.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Give him a second.
Is that my paperwork? Give me a second here.
He said he needed just a minute.
So, um, to be precise, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, to be precise, on the 22nd, we had 87 total.
How many?
Eighty-seven total.
Eighty-seven.
Yep. And then when, and this is where questioned as far as like how many that were in the actual Home Park area, and that was 39.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, both of those are from June the 22nd, those numbers he gave?
Yes.
What about June the 9th?
Give me just a second. It was 16 on June the 9th.
And these are all people, Mr. Bennett, that called in with a complaint? Or that we learned about some ways? How did you get that number?
It's from the call-in, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And to the question I was asked earlier, the governor's office started, I think it was June 22, not June 9, and that was not the city, that was the governor's office. All right, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bowson?
Thank you, sir. I would like to stress that if anybody that hasn't called in that had water and sewer damage on those days, to still call in to report that their issue, because I've had people reach out to me, and when I contacted them back, they hadn't turned that into the, to Randy yet. So, and I stressed upon them that our departments need to know that they're having those issues. So, if there are people out there that have had water or had sewer backup, that took it upon themselves to deal with it and not notify the city, they really do need to notify the city. That's all I have there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Klein?
Can I add one thing to that real fast, if that's okay? If they're going to do that, I'd like to give the phone number.
All right, what's the number?
It's 291-4553. Correct.
All right.
Sorry about that, you interrupted.
You're fine. Mrs. Klein?
Yeah, I would second that, because I was finishing up Precinct 5 of Ward 3 this week, and I came down Hickory Street, and I didn't even know Hickory Street had a water problem, but apparently they do. And I was shown a video of, looked to me like a stream running right through a couple of yards and flooding the road. And I asked them if they had called the city, and the particular people who were talking to me said no. So, I encouraged them to make an immediate call, and I'd like to report that now. It's in the 600 and 700 block of Hickory Street. So, Randy, that's for your purposes, but I'll get back with those people and make sure that they do. Also, another thing, as I was walking in the recent weeks, I have noticed something about our city. Our storm sewers are cluttered with debris. And it was before the, I noticed it even before the rains. So, I would like to encourage every citizen on every block to take it upon yourself, take a look at your storm sewer opening. I know I came home and I did ours. Go out, you know, let's be really proactive about even the little things, because we want those storm sewers to work effectively and accept the water that comes their way without any blockage at all. So, sweep it out, get the sticks out of the way, get the leaves and the grass. I don't know why the grass is in there, but let's get it all out and clean it all up, and do all the little things too that we can do to keep the water flowing freely into those storm sewer drains.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, a couple things, three things, in fact. The Dunsmore House, we have $80,000 in CIP, and that house is in dire need of repair. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm just asking for you to put pressure on to get those dire repair needs taken care of at the Dunsmore House. Waterloo history is disappearing every day that we don't tend to that house. Second thing is, I don't know if everybody knows this, but this is the week, starting yesterday, where Ragbri was supposed to begin out west, but then come through Waterloo. Well, COVID-19 stopped that. But we do have an event occurring called WAGRAW, W-A-G-R-A-W, which stands for the Waterloo Annual Great Ride Across Waterloo. If you go to the Experience Waterloo website, you still can sign up. The rides are based on minutes that would have been the miles ridden for each day. You get prizes, start at single speed, end up at single speed. You stop at a few places during the day, for like a 61-mile ride, I think, like what was yesterday, means you're on your bike for 61 minutes. So, it's a very creative thought and invention by Experience Waterloo people. And I would encourage people to get out, exercise, and support WAGRAW.
So, Pat? Hey, Pat, so it's not, so you don't have to ride 61 miles, you have to ride 61 minutes? Because I was just thinking like, wow.
No, 61 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
One day, it's down to, I think, the second to last day is only 39 minutes that you have to ride. So, and there's maps, if you want to use those maps to go on the route. Sometimes they're a little difficult to read, but I think with a little help from the originators, you can get that figured out. And then the last thing, Mr. Mayor, is that we as people on council that have been elected to our individual work for council at large, we're going through this virus crisis, COVID-19. And I'm just, again, asking all of us on council to mask up. We're the role models, I believe, for the citizens of Waterloo, and I hope that we practice socially distancing, that six-foot barrier. It helps, prevention is the key, and I would just ask... It helps, prevention is the key, and I would just ask everybody to follow that again. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Is there anyone else? Just real quickly before you close the presentations, Ms. Sharon, I just want to, um, reiterate, the city, along with multiple municipal districts, have been, of course, locally working on the census. And right now Waterloo is at sixty-five point six percent self-report rate compared to the state average of sixty-eight point one percent. So just a reminder, postcards are being sent out to households who have not responded at the end of this week. But what we're going to do is make a very hard push on the census portion. And if you want an example, a real-life example of how it works, well, during COVID, when we got, uh, some of the CARES money that goes to community development, that's based upon entitlement, entitlement dollars. And entitlement means, not entitlement that you didn't earn, but entitlement is talking about the way that it is divvied up, and it goes to individual cities and states. So Waterloo received X amount of dollars in CARES money, and that was based off the demographics of our community population as well. So for me, it was a very real, you, you hear about, oh, this impacts our money. You know, it impacts our resources, but to actually see how that's divided up and how it has an impact over what we receive, uh, it's absolutely important. And so this next week and beyond, and from all the planning that we've been doing prior to this, we're going to continue to ramp up our efforts via social media. We may reach out to some of you, find incredible council people to see if you want to do a quick blurb on your social media, if you're able to tell people to get out and register and get that information, because it's absolutely, uh, important that, that we are counting, that our numbers are counted. So we are going to step up efforts, um, like never before. And I'm hoping with all you incredible people, plus what we're doing in our studio with staff, with intercod, that we can have even a higher level of percentage of participation by the time this is, this is all over with. So, um, thank you very much. Ms. Juin.
Motion to close oral presentations, receive comments, and place on file.
Okay.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All oral presentations, uh, are closed.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Bill Payment 1A1 in the amount of four million, eight-hundred-and-seven-thousand, three, thirty-seven thousand dollars and seventy-five cents. Move to approve.
Ms. Juin, do I, the whole four five?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I was gonna ask, once it's approved, to see if, um, Keith, which I pretty much know the answers, but see if Keith can just give us a quick analysis. Or Pat, or Ray, do you want me to pull those completely off, or can we answer?
Mayor, since we already had a request to pull those off, the consent agenda, they're, they're currently separated from the consent agenda, and then once we, um,
Is they already off?
Yep, that's correct.
All right, all right. So we have a motion, does somebody second?
Second, second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion with the second for all the other items beside four, five, and six. Counsel discussion, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Being as that even though I did not ask for the removal, did you want me to do four, five, and six together or separately?
Please.
Together?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the motion to approve the following resolutions. First, approving the award to the bid, or to the bid to Woodruff Construction LLC of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of seventy-three thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, forty-four cents, and approving the contracts, bonds, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with airline terminal building improvements, Waterloo Regional Airport, number nine dash one dash one ninety dash ALO dash two hundred, Iowa DOT Aviation Bureau, contract number twenty, or two-zero-six-zero-one, and authorize the mayor's city clerk to execute said document. And next is approving the award of bid to Woodruff Construction LLC of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of one-hundred-five-thousand-dollar, one-hundred-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, seventy-five cents, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with improvements to hangar number four, Waterloo Regional Airport, project number nine dash one dash two-zero-zero dash ALO dash two hundred, Iowa DOT Aviation Bureau, contract number two-one-six-one-three, and authorize the mayor's city clerk to execute said documents. And finally, authorizing an exception to the city of Waterloo purchasing procedures to approve the purchase of one twenty-twenty-one Pearson Forster Triple Combination Pumper from Reliant Fire Apparatus Incorporated of Slinger, Wisconsin in the amount of six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. Keith, are you, um,
I am on.
projects in four and five?
I, 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 I'm not on video, uh, my, my camera's not on, but can you hear me, sir?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh, for number four, uh, yes, number four, I, I made a, I made a typo, I guess, which was pointed out to me by my consulting engineer, Doug Schindel with AECOM. So I'd like to respectfully request a, a change from the, the total amount of seventy-three thousand, six-twenty-four and forty-four cents to eighty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And this is, uh, part of the twenty-nineteen Iowa DOT grant from the Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Program. Unfortunately, when we bid this last year, we didn't receive any bids, so that's why we had to take it, uh, this year and work with a general contractor to actually receive a, a bid on the project.
Number five?
Number five, yes, uh, very same. This is a fiscal year twenty project under the same Iowa DOT Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Program for improvements to hangar number four at ALO. And that amount, one-hundred-and-five-thousand, two-thirteen-seventy-five, is true and correct.
Is that, um, how is this paid for? Do you have money for it?
Uh, we do. This is a grant, uh, for both nineteen and twenty that we received, uh, last year and the year before for the twenty-nineteen grant. This, uh, this first one in number five, no, excuse me, number four, will begin, um, a continuing phase replacement for the first-floor lobby baggage claim area and some office area improvements for the recarpeting. About three years ago, Iowa DOT, um, provided some flexibility in allowing airport sponsors and grant recipients to use, uh, the grant dollars for floor covering. Historically, that was not the case. There is an estimated, uh, once it was installed many years ago, an estimated three-hundred-thousand dollars plus of, of carpet in the building. So we're thankful for the flexibility given to us by, by the state and the Iowa DOT Aviation Bureau. In, in, in the event we weren't able to use the grant funds, we would probably have to reach out via the, the CIP process, uh, and the city bond program. And we don't want to do that, incur more, more dollars to, uh, the city's, um, bonding, uh, program. Would answer any questions that anybody may have.
That's good. We just want to know if you got the money to pay for it and how it was funded. And then, uh, Mr. Morrissey, we'll come back around after we ask a question about number six to have the updated, uh, dollar amount to go in there.
Mayor Hart? Mayor Hart, sorry, just a, just a quick note too, since we do have a change on that dollar amount, we'll need to do an amendment to that resolution.
Right, that's what I was saying. I wanted to take number six first, and then we'll come back.
Could I ask Keith quick what the amended dollar amount was?
Uh, yes, uh, eighty-one thousand, comma, eight-eight-one-point-two-five.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Let's go to, let's go to Pat, uh, Chief Tree Lord, before we come back to number four. But Keith, why do you need another fire truck or combination pumper?
Sure, okay, we're trying to, uh, replace a fourteen-year-old truck that's, uh, runs out of our downtown station. It's our one and only rescue truck in town. The usable life of a fire truck is usually somewhere around fifteen years. This is our busiest, uh, pumper in the, in the, in the city, so it's aged out about twenty years. It is in need of replacement. Mr. Dryer's correct, the six-hundred-and-sixty thousand is a lot of money. Uh, this truck will hold a lot of specialized equipment and will come with a lot of specialized equipment, including a cascade system that's used to fill firefighters' air bottles while on scene, and is a little larger than most of our trucks. But it is needed, and, uh, if we were to order it tomorrow, we could expect delivery of it thirteen months from now.
All right. Uh, Mr. Morrissey, um, would you like to amend number four?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, Resolution Number Four is taking off the consent agenda to, uh, the dollar amount of eighty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second for, uh, the amendment. Um, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen? Mr. Bozen?
Mr. Bozen, a thumb up?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, all right. So to items four, five, and six, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for Public Works Truck Wash Project.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on, uh, truck wash at Public Works?
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Is the truck wash project ours or tied to the one at the airport? If ours, being behind on money, uh, because of COVID-19, is it necessary when you are talking cutting roadwork projects?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dryer. We, um, this is not tied to, uh, the project near the airport. This is one that we've been trying to work on for, um, a couple of years now and, and finally have been able to prioritize that for, uh, our equipment. We're sending, uh, trucks, we're sending, uh, other cars to different places to be cleaned. This is one that will have located directly our Public Works building, which we already have been, had this in plans for years. But Randy, you want to give more conversation on that?
Uh, yes, uh, Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. And just to kind of, uh, expand on that a little bit, so when the complex was originally built, um, it actually had the bay in there, um, it just didn't have the funds, um, when it was originally done to move forward with that. And like the mayor just stated, that's something we've been putting in the CIP for this. And now we're at the point of, um, opening bids, and this truck washed, um, you know, with some of the alternates, it's not only able to, um, wash as far as our large equipment, like motors, graders, automated trucks, along with some of our small equipment, it's got the capability with, uh, potentially, um, with the options to have like a neutralizer net, especially when it comes to our plow equipment to neutralize some of that, uh, salt, so we can hopefully extend the life of, um, the truck chassis and a lot of the blockers and stuff, which here just recently we had to, uh, replace some on, some of them because of, uh, you know, deterioration and some of that. So hopefully by having this internally, we can extend the life of some of our equipment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Again, is it needed when we're behind on dollars, uh, to have that convenience, I'll call it? Uh, might save money over the long run, I don't disagree with that. But right now, when we're looking at dollars that need to be saved, do we need to have a truck wash right now? Thank you.
All right, anyone else who comments? Uh, Madam, uh, Mr. Foyce?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and operating to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, could Mr. Bennett just explain the, the funding source for us? Because it sounds like there's some confusion about, um, the road overlay project that we'll talk about later, and this project. So I just want to clarify where, where the funding is coming from, for myself and for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Greider. Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, this, this is actually something that we've been, um, putting in the CIP for a couple of years, um, so hopefully have enough to pay for this project. So it's through the CIP process.
Oh, it's been, it's been bonded out then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, instruct city clerk to read bids and refer the Public Works Division Manager for a review.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Uh, any other questions, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
All right, our first bidder was Cardinal Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Alternate one, eighteen-thousand-five-hundred. Alternate two, seven-thousand-fifty. And alternate three, sixty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Second bidder was Failure Hurley Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Alternate one, seventeen-thousand-four-hundred dollars. Alternate two, six-thousand-four-hundred dollars. And alternate three, fifty-eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Our third bidder was Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Alternate one, seventeen-thousand-nine-hundred-fifteen dollars. Alternate two, six-thousand-four-hundred-fifty-five dollars. And alternate three, fifty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-eighty-nine dollars. Our final bidder was Kidder Construction Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-nine-hundred-forty dollars. Alternate one, nineteen-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-four dollars. Alternate two, six-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-two dollars. And alternate three, fifty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-eighteen dollars.
Thank you. Number, uh, number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
That was Mr. Amos.
That was Mr. Amos.
Oh, I'm, my bad, my bad. Eyes on my screen, it kind of flipped around. Sorry, gentlemen.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the purchase of one twenty-twenty-one forest, forestry aerial lift truck.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to a forestry aerial lift truck?
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street, I have the same question. We're behind on money, we can't fix streets, uh, uh, proposal, we can't fix some streets, and here we go spending some more money. It doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me. If I don't have the money to go on vacation, I don't go on vacation. If I don't have the money to go on vacation, I don't go on vacation. I, I can't understand why you guys aren't thinking about how much money you're going to take in down the road. With the COVID- nineteen, I see it in the paper all, all the time about all the cities, not just Waterloo, the state. The government is behind on incoming funds because of this, and you guys continue to spend money that you don't have, in my estimation. Thank you. Frustrating.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, um, Paul, uh, is this, this aerial lift truck, what does it do? Uh, and how's it help public safety?
Okay, this is Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
All right, good. Um, this is one of two lift trucks that we continually operate for our Forestry Division. So it gets used for tree removals and tree trimming. And during storm events, it gets used pretty much non-stop, um, around the clock. The one we're, we're replacing, one of two, the one we're replacing will be fifteen years old when replaced, because it's over a year out of the build. Um, it is prone to break down. We've had a number of breakdowns in the hydraulic system and some other, some other issues with the engine itself. So it's, um, kind of limping along and has had a lot of use on it. We do have the funding available in the CIP. It's been planned for about five years now.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions on this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was two-hundred-thousand dollars after trade value is applied. Our first bidder is Harrison Truck Centers of Elkhorn Heights, Iowa. Their bid amount was one-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-six-hundred-eighteen dollars. The trade value they gave was ten-thousand-five-hundred dollars for a total bid of one-hundred-seventy-six-thousand-one-hundred-eighteen dollars. Our second bidder was Altech Industries Incorporated of Creedmoor, North Carolina. Their bid amount was one-hundred-ninety-one-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-nine dollars. Their trade-in value was ten-thousand dollars for a total bid value of one-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-nine dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving bid to Harrison Truck Centers of Elkhorn Heights, Iowa, in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-one-hundred-eighteen dollars.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone take number four, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider, I got it right.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one Lowell Elementary Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project Contract Number One Zero Two Six.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to, uh, speak on a sanitary sewer project?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Madam Clerk?
Our estimate for the project was one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-two-hundred-sixty-five dollars. Our first bidder was Veeth Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was eighty-two-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-nine dollars fifty cents. Our second bidder was Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two-hundred-ninety-one-thousand-four-hundred-thirty dollars and five cents. Our third bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Rhinebeck, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-eight dollars seventy-five cents. And our final bidder was Hearst and Sons of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-thirty-one dollars and thirty cents.
Hey, uh, Mrs. Clerk, what was that first bid?
Um, it says eighty-two-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Right, okay, thank you. Uh, could someone take, um, five, six, and seven, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving an amendment to master development agreement with North Crossing LLC, originally executed January twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, to extend Project Five deadline to December thirty-first, twenty twenty, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number six is a resolution approving a management agreement with Republic Parking System Incorporated, effective July twentieth, twenty twenty, and expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of forty-thousand dollars annually, and authorize the mayor to execute said doc, agreement. Next is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Clap Saddle Garber Associates Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for construction-related services in an, in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, in conjunction with fiscal year twenty-twenty Warp Drive Rise Project Contract Number Nine Seven Seven, and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on these three items?
Um, and we do have representatives from Republic Parking and, um, Clap Saddle Garber Associates on the line, too.
All right. Is there someone at the podium?
Yes.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Uh, the money we spend with Republic, do we get any money out of the parking fees and the ramp fees and all of that? Uh, or are we just, because we supply the ramps, we supply the meters. What do we get out of it, uh, hiring them to manage it?
Any other questions on that, Mr. Uh, all right. Um, um, Michelle, I think this may be you, um, with the fees and ramp fees. Do we, do we get anything out of this?
Yes, all the revenue collected from the meters and the parking ramps is the city's revenue, and all the expenses to operate it are the city's expenses as well.
All right. Uh, anyone else with questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., uh, anyone else from the crowd? Sorry, Mr. Morrissey, the, uh, all right, Mr. Morrissey, it's your floor.
Well, well, first of all, just a, a point of clarification. Um, in, in number five, at the end of the statement, it says authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And then in six, seven, the "and the city clerk" part is left off. Is there a procedural reason for that, or what?
Uh, Mrs. Clerk, I think it says that on the last, on number eight, and then not on number nine. Mrs. Clerk?
It's, it says it on number five, Mr. Mayor.
Right, it's written on five and nine, but not six, seven, and eight.
Yeah, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, yeah.
Yeah, generally when we're putting together the agenda, um, the code requires that the mayor and city clerk do execute all the contracts that the city enters into. However, the contracts that are put to the agenda do not always have a spot for the city clerk to sign. So we, when we look at the contracts that are submitted, um, we adjust the language according to what signature blocks are available. So that's why sometimes you'll see mayor and city clerk, or just mayor.
Okay, so that wasn't an omission, that's just the way that it's done, Kelly?
Yeah, that's the way the contract's been put together.
Okay, okay. A, and Mr. Mayor? Um, secondly, um, I would like to make a, I, I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, item number six. Um, and what I, uh, I make a motion to amend by adding the following to this, that, um, the agreement is effective for all, for one year, from seven-twenty twenty-twenty to seven-twenty twenty-twenty-one. And that during this one-year period of seven-twenty twenty to seven-twenty twenty-one, the city of Waterloo will implement for downtown Waterloo on-street parking in the following manner. First of all, no less than one hour of free parking on the following segments of streets. Fourth Street from Franklin to Bluff Street, which is now Washington Street. Uh, secondly, the streets intersecting Fourth Street between Park Avenue and Fifth Street from Franklin to Bluff, which include Mulberry, Lafayette, Sycamore, Cedar, Commercial, and Jefferson. Uh, next, uh, repeat daily overtime parking violators will have fines doubled and tripled for second and third violations for any given day. And third, that impli, implementation of this amendment will be completed by no later than July twentieth of twenty-twenty-one. That's the amendment that I would like to make to this number six resolution.
Right. So that's been made with the second. Uh, discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Um, Jessica, uh, from Waterloo Main Street, I believe, is, is present. At the, the board meeting, the discussion that I heard, unless it's changed, is they weren't asking for one hour of free parking, they were asking for fifteen minutes in the loading, um, current loading zones and changing them to stop and go, or, um, I, I'd like to hear from her as to what the, the Main Street proposal is.
Uh, Jessica from Main Street, Waterloo. Um, we have this proposal that I've been working with different city departments and Republic Parking on to transform the loading zones into grab-and-go zones since before the contract came up. Um, Mr. Morrissey has reached out to me and talked to me about his, uh, amendments to the contract, and we would support it to support the businesses downtown. The project we're working on is separate from this.
So Jessica and I had, Mr. Jewen, can I, Jessica and I actually, uh, this past week, went out and toured the grab-and-go zones. Uh, and Jessica, how many? I have two sheets of locations and areas that, uh, Executive Director had asked us to, uh, list as grab-and-go zones. I did have a conversation, uh, with CFO, which, uh, her office works directly, uh, with the parking. Uh, so we, um, were under the impression that these grab-and-go zones, which are, Jessica, how many are there on here?
I apologize, I don't have those in front of me. Um, I, I believe there's twenty-some loading zones right now. And with my proposal of moving a few of them and eliminating ones that are no longer, like, don't have signs up, uh, would actually get rid of a few of them and enable those to be paid parking spaces. I would have gathered about five of those.
So there's over twenty or so sites, um, that they're looking at grab-and-goes. And to Mr. Morrissey's credit as well, uh, had shot an email to, um, about that particular portion of it. So we're ready to go into grab-and-go zones. But right now, uh, Mr. Morrissey has an amendment to number six. Um, you want to tell us what that is again, so folks will understand?
Well, this, Mr. Mayor, first of all, it changes the five-years, uh, period for this contract down to one year. Um, uh, from seven-twenty twenty-twenty to seven-twenty twenty-one. And then secondly, during that year, it, uh, states that, um, the city will implement a no less than one hour of free parking, uh, on those streets that I mentioned, which basically are from, uh, uh, Fourth Street at Franklin, all the way across the river to what formerly was known as Bluff Street, which is now Washington Street. And then on each one of the streets, uh, intersecting Fourth Street, uh, from, uh, uh, or between Park Avenue and Fifth Street, those streets being, um, uh, Mulberry, uh, Lafayette, Sycamore, uh, Cedar Street, Commercial Street, and Jefferson Street. Those streets would also have that same, uh, no less than one hour of free parking, um, mechanism put in place. Uh, a second part of that is that repeat daily overtime parking violators will have their fines doubled and then tripled for the second and third violations respectively on any given day. And that whole purpose behind that is to eliminate, uh, the, uh, recurrence of employees, uh, using those spaces, but also, uh, for those people who choose to not pay the meter and just keep their car parked there all day. And then the final part of that is that the amendment's implementation will be completed no later than a year from today, Mr. Mayor.
Right, so, um...
May, Mayor Hart?
Yeah, I'm gonna come to you, is that Marty?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of concerns with that motion. First of all, the, the agenda item doesn't give the public notice that the council's gonna consider, um, you know, changing parking arrangements downtown. As I understand, the agenda item is to approve a management agreement, to approve a contract. I also would have some concerns about the parking meter reference. But our code of ordinances in six-dash-one-dash-two says the provisions of ordinance seventeen-twenty adopted April fourteenth, nineteen forty-seven is amended and set out in the compilation of ordinances is preserved and saved. I, I've never looked at that ordinance, but I think, I, I think, I think I would hesitate to take an action that's arguably not giving notice to the public and, and, and probably taking action that has to be done by an ordinance as well. So I, I would just sort of point that out, um, to the chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, so that's to the chair. Um, Mrs. Jewen, then I think we're gonna go to Mrs. Wheatner about the amendment.
Okay, I, I just, mine is one needing clarification. Um, I understand that, um, Jessica talked about the park-and-go, whatever they're called, that she's got that proposal and the locations for them. Is Mr. Morrissey's proposal in addition to that? And his one-hour parking, is that that all of the existing meters then would be changed to free one-hour parking meters? Is that what I'm understanding?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Juwan asked a question with regards to your amendment.
And my answer was yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she meant yes, I hear you.
So this is in addition to what Main Street is recommending? It is changing everything to one-hour free parking? And my question would be, how do we anticipate making up the lost revenue?
Well, I, I don't know how much lost revenue because that's taking just certain meters out, uh, especially with the loading zones being there. Um, and, uh, I believe that this says implementation for that. Um, and that would be one of the things that would be discussed while this process, uh, goes through so that it is, I mean, it gives it a year to be implemented in whatever fashion, uh, using whatever means that we as a city council with the work of city staff come up with.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Like, if we don't know the lost revenue in advance and in light of, of our city attorney's concern, I, I cannot support this. Because I think Mr. Morrissey's motion wasn't to, to explore this option, it was to implement this option. And without some of those questions being answered, I, I don't believe I can support it.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir.
I just wanted to add that last week, I notified the council during the council meeting that I was going to make a motion to this effect. So it's not that I, that the council was not made, been made aware that I was gonna be introducing a motion to this effect. When I did say it last week.
Financial impact along with-
Mr. Juwan, Mr. Pa- uh, it's Mr. Morrissey's floor right now.
That, that's all, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that the council was recollecting that I had notified the council that I was bringing amendment to this, to the council this week.
Mr. Mayor?
This is, Mrs. Juwan, in response to that, you had a-
Well, Jess, I knew he was going to make amendment, but I had anticipated that we would address lost revenue, that, um, you know, his motion is that we do something, not explore something. And I think there's more explanation, exploration that needs to happen, that's it.
Oh, so what I wanna do is go to Mrs., um, Wheatner, then go to Mrs. Klein and then Mr. Bozen.
Michelle Wheatner, Chief Financial Officer, so, um, I'm concerned, I think, that we're mixing two separate things and maybe that's what City Attorney, um, Peterson was referring to. But the ordinances that are enforced really are a separate issue from the parking contract, management contract, number one. Um, number two, we, we would need to clarify that with Republic, what they would accept. They, they, you know, the contract they're submitting is for five years. They may be fine with just a one-year, but we will have to discuss that with them following this meeting. The other thing that really concerns me about the parking proposal, I, I don't know that our meters can be adjusted for one-hour free parking. Some of our meters are very old, um, it may require a pretty large capital investment to start doing that. So there, there is some work that has to go into whether we can make that work. Um, and I, I just felt it important to talk about that.
All right, Mrs. Klein?
Mr. Mayor, I, I can't support this tonight either for a couple of reasons. Not only our legal opinion that we just heard, but also I, I appreciate Mrs. Juwan's comments on, I don't think this has been looked into with as much depth as it needs to. Loss of revenue right now is a very serious matter for Waterloo. And, um, I, I just think it needs to be explored, but my main reason is I just don't know why we couldn't have had this and had our eyes on it a day ago. Well, I don't, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable with having things in detail like this sprung on us, even though we had heard that there was an amendment coming. I thought we were gonna get a chance to look at it, ask questions about it, to the professionals involved and we don't have time for that here, so I, I'm not in favor of it tonight.
All right, uh, Mr. Bozen?
Thank, thank you, sir. The original contract we had with Republic was a five-year contract and at the end of that contract, it specifically said it would be extended on a year-to-year basis. So what we're in, introducing tonight is, is an additional five-year contract track with Republic. I, I think Mr. Morrissey's timeframe is, is difficult, I, I do, and I, and I think, I think factoring in our loss of revenue, um, and what we lose in those meters would be a difficult task and the cost of, of, uh, bonding and, and paying for meters that would allow, because the meters we have now would not allow those for one-hour free parking. And I, I would propose that if we're really serious about helping out the businesses in downtown Waterloo, that, that maybe we just make East Four, Fourth Street from Franklin to Bluff two-hour parking. And, uh, that could be enforced by Republic. We could factor in those meters and know next year at budget time what we would be, uh, losing in, in revenue or we'd have to reduce in revenue. And it would allow people to shop and spend time downtown. A fifteen-minute loading zone does not get you into Rodney's Kitchen if there's a line to get your food and get out. So, or, or, or a load-and-go or what, whatever they call it, or even, even in, at Lincoln Perk if it's, if there, uh, if there's a line. So I would like to, uh, just, just for topic of discussion, amend Mr. Morrissey's, uh, uh, amendment to, to, to just not include all of the meters in his boundary that he outlined, but just include the, uh, creating two-hour parking, East Fourth Street from, from Franklin to Washington.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, you know, I, I, I'm sitting here listening and I have had conversation with Councilman Morrissey on this, but one of my concerns is, is there doesn't seem to be enough communication going on because the way that I view this is, is our Chief Financial Officer and Republic should be involved in this. I mean, the contract that we are letting here involves Republic. Do we even know if they will accept a year contract or if they'll just walk away? Those are things that concern me that I'm not hearing have happened, that conversation, I guess.
Well, Mr. Mr., um, Marty, are, right now, are we talking about, uh, a contract? Are we talking about, uh, particular spaces within that contract? Are we able to do both right now or is that a separate conversation?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, um, well, I mean, the, the agenda item is approving a contract, um, with Republic and I just also looked at, a reference to the parking meters, our traffic code, section three twenty of our traffic code designates twelve-minute, thirty-minute, one-hour, two-hour, four-hour, ten-hour parking meter areas. And so i- it, there's no question that any proposed change to some free parking or any change would have to be done by an ordinance and I think specifically addressed in that code's section. It does though say in that section three twenty of our traffic code, it says, "The location of the metered individual parking spaces and the type of meters installed, providing parking time limits, shall be designated by resolution of the city council." But, but I think the way I read that is, the options for designating those spaces and the types of meeting and the time limits, it has to do with twelve-minute, thirty-minute, one-hour, two or four, ten-hour parking area meters. So, I mean, I, I think, I think, I think the, the resolution for tonight with Republic, you can amend the terms of the, or the length of the contract. I think, I think that's proper, um, because the public has been given notice that, um, it's going to be, um, it, it's gonna be considered and, and so anything relating to the actual contract, I think, can be amended tonight.
But, Mr. Mayor? But, uh, my question is, is, does it require an ordinance change to rem- is this, what I'm wondering, does the contract from that's on the agenda and the amendment, are those the same, are, are, can those be presented at the same time or does that require another conversation talking about the actual code section you just read?
Well, the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I think Mr. Morrissey can make motions to amend the resolution with regard to specific items contained in the agreement with Republic, but not, for example, which parts of town would be considered and would be changed to free parking or, you know, an hour of free parking or whatever the case is.
So the contract, the contract and the terms of the contract?
Mr. Mayor?
Let me, I wanna talk to the city attorney for just a quick second, Mr. Mor-
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Um, Mr. Um, Peters, the terms of the contract can be discussed?
Yes, and I have not looked at the contract, but certainly I, I think an amendment to make it a one-year contract instead of a five-year contract, I think that would be appropriate for consideration.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Wheatner, Mrs. Wheatner, um, and this locks them in at forty thousand dollars for five years? So they can't, they're not going to go up on price, but it locks them in for five years at the same price?
The current proposal, and I, they may very well accept the one-year as well. But of course, if we accept the one-year, you're right, we don't know what price they may want for years two through five then.
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, with, uh, Councilman Bozen's, uh, agreement, I would like to remove, uh, from my motion, everything other than the, uh, agreement being for one year only with the stipulation that next week or the following week, uh, we will have a work session on, uh, parking meters and spaces so that a resolution or ordinance change can come from that. If, if I can get, uh, that agreement with Councilman Bozen to drop everything but the one-year agreement.
I, 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 I'm, I'm fully in favor of that, Mr. Mayor.
Right, so Mr. Morrissey, um, I'm not, I, I, you, it, you, I don't know how-
One other quick question.
Can I, can I finish?
Yep.
I don't know how we can tie having a conversation next week other than giving you, uh, my word that we'll have a conversation next week about it as you request. A work session, is that amenable?
That's, that's amenable, Mr. Mayor, I, I, because everybody's hearing that this is what we're gonna do.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Juwan, with regards to the one-year contract amendment?
Yes, um, I, I guess, uh, maybe my, maybe my comment is more about the dis- the conversation we're going to have in the future, um, because in talking to Ms. Rucker, her thought was to get the downtown businesses together and have more of a, a town hall, Zoom, whatever, meeting to get all of their input, not just the input from us. Um, and then my second question as it relates to the contract, we can approve a five-year contract, um, with Republic and I've heard a lot of good things about how well they've done with the management, uh, of, of our downtown parking. And still subsequently have this other discussion about removing parking meters, changing the time, changing the fees, whatever, um, that they're two separate issues. And I guess I am in favor of supporting the contract as presented to us for five years and then we can still have this other discussion and not impact the conditions or the outcomes of that contract.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bozen, can you, um, would you like to remove your one-year or your two-hour parking?
Yes, sir.
So you removed that, okay.
Yes, sir.
So, so right now, we're voting on the amendment to go to a one-year contract. Keeping in mind, prices go up everywhere, but we are voting on one year of this contract, of the amendment.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
So, I understand what, uh, Councilor-at-Large Juwan is asking. Um, and I guess this might be a question for CFO Wheatner. Um, if we're, if we sign a five-year contract, does that specify how we do things? Or can we, could we go back and make the changes that Mr. Morrissey wants? Even if we were in a five-year contract, or does the five-year contract set us at a certain point with the meters and, and things of that nature, just so that we're clear?
The contract is just to enforce our parking laws, so you could change it later. The caution that we have to talk about is how we budget for it. We are trying to have that budget be balanced between the revenue that's collected and what we spend. So, and, and I don't know the impact on the parking, but if we would assume it would go down, you know, it's, I believe you want to continue to have them do the same enforcement that they do today, but likely the revenue declines, so that makes that challenging. So there just would be some budgetary work that would have to be done. But they can, they will enforce whatever laws we tell them we have.
So, and I just wanna be clear, CFO Wheatner, so if next month, next week, next year, um, we decide that we wanna go with Councilman Morrissey's plan, that, that's not going to impact the contract? Other than we have to look at the revenue pieces, but, but if we decide to do an hour, three hours, fifty hours free, this contract still covers it because they're enforcing our laws?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Right, and that's one of the problems we were having right now about combining in a contract something that needs to take place in an ordinance. Um, I had somebody else-
This mayor, it was me.
Mr. Morrissey and then Mr. Bozen.
Well, uh, one of the things I'd like to explain in the management agreement, uh, the, uh, second, uh, section or the first one says recitals. And in it, it says, um, whereas the City of Waterloo and Republic Parking desire to enter into a written agreement under which Republic Parking will provide the City of Waterloo with certain garage surplus lot services as identified in Exhibit A attached, but then I go to Exhibit A, well, I'm trying. And I'm just, it's got three things that I don't understand how that, um, relates to what's in the recitals.
Well, right now, right now, um, you have an am-
We're approving the contract.
Yeah, no, you have an amendment you're approving, the one-year. So if we can approve your amendment, then we can go into the approval of the contract.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Bozen?
I, I just wanted to, to, to make a note that if, if we're budgeting a, a, a neutral balance of two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of revenue and two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of expenses for Republic, any, we're gonna have to make that shortfall up somewhere. Because a- any, any free parking that we're gonna allow anywhere in downtown is going to affect that because we've already budgeted X amount of dollars for Republic, expecting to balance that out so it's revenue neutral.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
On the- Does someone ca- say something?
Me, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Klein, on the one-year contract.
Is it my turn?
Mrs. Klein?
Okay, um, I was just interested in hearing what Mr. Bozen just said. So one of the suggestions I know that will come up for making that shortfall will be to increase taxes when we get around to increasing taxes. So you're either gonna charge people to park or you're gonna charge them to park by increasing their taxes. There's a potential for that. So either way, people are gonna pay for parking.
All right, on the amendment for one year, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Duen?
No.
All right, so, uh, the motion is to move that from a, uh, five-year contract to a one-year contract conversation?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Duen?
Can we ask Republic, or is it unfair to ask them in public if they would accept a one-year contract?
Uh, Republic?
I know that John Rouse, the manager, is out of town, our local person is on the phone, but I, I would respectfully ask that we not put her in that position to answer that.
Yeah, I would say that'd be something we'd have to go back through the higher-up in the company and discuss. I wouldn't want to give an answer tonight on that.
So, Mr. Mayor? Uh, Mr. Morrissey was next.
Mr. Mayor, I'd asked that question before regarding the Exhibit A and how that doesn't seem to correlate to what the recital, uh, statement is.
Yes, I, I will do, I will try, but he has a good point. I don't know where that exhibit is, I'm not finding it in the original contract either, so, um, I apologize, that is, I missed that, we'll have to provide it later.
Mr. Mayor? If you scroll down in the agreement, all the way at the bottom, I'm finding Exhibit A, extensive manager, I don't know if that's the one they're talking about or not.
Yeah, I don't think it is, I'm, I, it appears that we are supposed to have a list in here, or attached to it, in the places they're enforcing, and I am not finding that, so we are gonna have to locate that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, once again, like I said before, my concern is, is that one-year contract, there's never been any discussion apparently with Republic on the one-year contract, so even if we as a council pass this, we could end up without a company representing us, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, it's been amended, so, um, all right, and as I mentioned, I did tour, uh, with the Main Street Director, uh, this past, that last week, on some, uh, concept they'd like to see that I think is very doable, but, Madam Clerk?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I did have a question about number five, are we voting on the, on, on all five, three of those, or just?
Uh, we got, we got all three of them, so, uh, council can just separate if they, they want.
I just had a question on five for Noel.
Yes, sir.
And my, and my question was, um, we're, we're extending the development agreement at North Crossing, and, and I'm in favor of extending it, I'm just curious on the develop, the, the agreement said it was supposed to be completed by two thousand nineteen, and we're moving it to two thousand twenty in December, I'm, I'm just curious on why it wasn't brought before the last, the, the, the last council prior to December of two thousand nineteen, when, when we knew that we weren't gonna hit those benchmarks, why we're waiting seven months after that benchmark to bring it back before council?
So?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, that, that's a very good point, uh, one of the reasons, you know, and we were in confidentiality, we knew that they were working with Burger King for the project, um, but we were trying to figure out the, the details of what that new date would be for the amendment, um, so we'll try to do a better job of at least communicating with the council, um, that, that, you know, things are coming, that there'll be an amendment coming in, in the future, but we didn't know what date to put on that until, uh, we actually got everything done with the plating and, and redevelopment of the site for Burger King to move ahead.
Thank you.
All right, uh, council five, six, and seven, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes, on five and seven, no on six.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes, on five and seven, no on six.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Duen?
Yes, on five and seven, no on six.
And Mr. Boson?
Yes.
So, just for council's information, um, we don't know, doing a, doing a, a change of a contract like this on the day of, and, and not getting that prior, I have no idea if they'll accept it or not, just FYI, eight, nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, yes, uh, Mr. Boson?
I've adopted a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Castelgarber Associates of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for construction-related services, in the amount not to exceed of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in conjunction with the Liberty Sanitary and Water Improvement Project Contract Number Nine Eight Seven, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. And number nine, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of three million, two hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars, forty-eight cents, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the FY twenty twenty asphalt overlay program, Contract Number Nine Nine Two, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Motion has been made with the subject, Mr. Amos.
Councilman Boson on number eight said Cedar Rapids, and I believe that's Cedar Falls.
I'm sorry, I, I digress, Cedar Falls, Iowa.
Come on, Mr. Boson, get it together.
It's the classroom.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Amos, um, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to these two items?
Yes, sir. David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street, uh, some time ago, it was in the paper that Waterloo has a failing tax base, was noted by Ms. Weidner. Now, COVID nineteen and articles numerous, that I cut out several, in the paper about not, uh, being able to, uh, do some roads, et cetera, uh, about not enough money, uh, to finish, complete, or start some projects, and one of those had something about approving this contract tonight, but then we'll go to a certain point and then just cut it off. Well, does that mean that we're gonna start the street and we won't get it finished? Or are we gonna decide how much money we can spend, and then how much money that project will cost, and then do, do that street complete and then not do another? That's kind of a question. Uh, I also see Waterloo's second-best construction year, uh, ever in history, however, how many years is it going to take to see money, tax money, in entirety, not just their base tax, from those projects that we allow a lot of rebates on, and we give them some money, et cetera, uh, because we're so gracious? Uh, New Airport Industrial Park Project, which might have a pro, a prospect, we keep doing all these things that we might, we might, we might, and we don't, we don't, we don't, we've got, what, I don't know how many acres now in industrial parks, uh, northeast side, et cetera, that is vacant land, with the prospect of getting someone to, uh, want to rent those or whatever. There were two projects out at the airport that are now still iffy, uh, for that nor, for that airport site that we're now gonna put money into to develop. We always go on an if and a when, and then we don't have any money, something seems crazy to me on that, thank you.
All right, um, Michelle, uh, with regards, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Uh, Michelle, with regards to the, um, failing tax base, uh, would you like to make some comments or, uh, clarification? And then, um, Jamie, I'm gonna have you, um, explain exactly, uh, what we're doing now, but Michelle, are you around?
I am certainly here, Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer, I'm, I'm racking my brain, I, I can't imagine that I ever said we have a failing tax base. Our tax base, when we went into the twenty-one budget, exceeded four billion dollars, I think, for the very first time, so I'm, I'm just not sure what, what I might have said that could be construed as failing, because I don't think that's the case in any way or shape. Um, I will, I would like to go ahead and address a little bit on the street funding, uh, that because of COVID nineteen, there are impacts statewide on some of our street funding, it, cities receive their funding quite late in the game, that, you know, the businesses have to generate the taxes, then they have to pay them to the state, the state has to allocate them, but back out, so it takes a while, um, and we just don't have all the pieces of that puzzle that we need to have right now. So that is why I am being cautious about awarding the contract, and now I will let Jamie explain what we're gonna do to address that.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, as I sent in the email last week to mayor and council, we had a good, good discussion between myself and Noel and Michelle on what we would do with this, so in working with the contractor, um, and this was actually their suggestion, to do a certain amount, and then, uh, at that point, we would basically stop construction, and then we would take a look at the finances based on hopefully better information from the state regarding the local option sales tax. So to that end, what, what I have decided, or what I had sent to council, was that we would do Greyhound, Lafayette, Newell, Rachel, Reed, Sandmarten Drive Access and Tower Park Drive, the, as the initial portion of the contract, and that, and we would do all of those roads completely, so they were all finished, and not leave them half-finished, as was suggested earlier. That comes in at about two-point-two million dollars. At that point, then, once those projects or once those streets are complete, we'll have a, have a discussion internally, um, and with council as well, and then what, once we have a better handle on the finances, if things are looking good, we would go ahead and finish the other streets in the project, which are West Eleventh Street, Easton, Flaming, Forest, Hartman Meadow Lane, and Stephan. Um, there's various reasons why that I have chosen which ones to do first and which ones to do second, um, but basically, it was directed to get the ones that we absolutely had to do this year, as I discussed last week, um, try to get those done this year, and then hopefully the money will be there later on to go ahead and finish the rest of the contract. Um, that's the plan that I have put forth to council, um, I know that, that Mil Dakhovic with Aspro is on the phone as well, or I believe he is, um, and can certainly answer any questions if council has any of him, um, as far as what we're doing, but that's, that's the plan, that's the process that, that I put forward, and hopefully council will go ahead with it tonight.
So, so, uh, with regards to the statements about not taking a look at condition, not taking a look at, um, possible loss revenue, with the comments about, um, um, how we're going to move, move forward, you, Michelle, Noel, you sat down, you took a look at the projects, you came up with a way to complete, uh, the projects that we start, but also you put in there benchmarks or checkmarks to see if we'll continue to move forward on those other projects, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, and, um, just really, really quickly too, um, because, you know, given COVID and giving, um, uh, contracting, this, your bids also include, um, uh, minority contract, uh, minority contracts, construction contracts within there as well, right, minority and women?
Correct.
Okay, um, council, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
And, and Mr. Knutson, I, I do apologize, I meant to send you this question and then time escaped me, so, um, you sat down with CFO Weidner and, and, and Mr. Anderson about that two-point-two million, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear, so, um, and I just want to make, if we were to like, separate out that first phase, that two-point-two million, and then put the, the second phase in a second one, would that have to, if we separated them, would the second phase have to go through a rebid process and all of that?
That is a very good question, depending upon how you worded it, I, that'd be a question I would put to the city attorney for some help on that.
Okay.
Michelle, I want to add, I think, I feel pretty confident by the time these segments are done, that hopefully we will have a better idea of whether we can have the funding in place to do the last part, this was a great suggestion by Mr. Dakhovic, and I personally would like to thank him for suggesting it, because it does provide a relief valve for us should we need it, which I sincerely hope we don't.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, John Boson.
Uh, Mr. Greider, are you done first?
All I want to say is my concern, I, I'm not saying that we need to go out and bid, I just want to make sure we're not delaying the projects, and if, and if this works and if Aspro's on board and, and we're great, then that's fine, I just wanted to ask the question, and I meant to ask Youtnar, and that, that's my fault.
Yeah, and I think this gives us an opportunity to continue, uh, with construction, because some of these projects are tied to larger projects, which are economic development, which, which may equate to jobs, so I think this is the, the, the best way to move forward, but also have those checkmarks in place, like you want to see as well, before we can pass those projects. Mr. Boson?
Yeah, thank you, I just, I want to commend the CFO and, and our engineering staff and that, and, and Mr. Dakhovic for, for working together on this project, my only question is, once we finish Phase One, does, and, and we feel we have the dollar amount to continue on and do Phase Two, does that come back before the council, or is that just something that's gonna be decided by engineering or CFO?
Uh, process, Kelly or someone, or Noel, or Jamie?
This is Jamie, I would say, my suggestion would be that, again, the council would approve the entire contract tonight, subject to funding for the Phase Two streets, um, we can certainly bring that back to council if they would like, or if they want to, you know, know that internally, staff will have that discussion, um, and they're okay with that as well, that would be fine too, I guess that's up to the, I'd leave that up to the council's discretion, which, which way they would prefer to see it.
Well, to, to Mr. Boson's point, um, you know, you're asking to approve the contract, I would probably say that, uh, staff needs to come back before council and give an update on exactly where we're at, what we're going to do with those projects, so that they could, uh, be in the know, uh, with that as well, so I would probably highly encourage, or even, uh, I won't say mandate, but bring that back before the council, so they know exactly what's taking place with these projects. Is that what you'd like to see, Mr. Boson, some type of notification or something about where we're at?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, Jamie, you got that?
We will do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Morrissey?
Well, so that brings up, uh, a suggestion, can we not add a few words to this resolution saying, uh, subject to, uh, funding for the Phase Two streets and a review vote by city council?
Um, Michelle, Jamie, or Marty, how does the language that's currently been sent to council match up with what Mr. Morrissey's asking?
Not sure, Jamie, I don't, I don't know if we've changed any of the contract language, correct?
This is Jamie, no, we did not change any of the contract language, but certainly, again, if, if council feels more at ease adding the statement, basically like Mr. Morrissey just said, uh, again, I know that Aspro, this was their suggestion, so I believe that they would go along with it wholeheartedly, um, and again, Mil is on the phone, if you'd like to get concurrence from him, but you could certainly put it in there, just as Mr. Morrissey stated, subject, we do Phase One, and Phase Two would be subject to funding and council approval.
Yeah, this is, uh, Mil Dakhovic from Aspro, uh, I, I just would suggest that you're probably overcomplicating this thing, uh, if you, if you, it's just award the contract tonight, if you do something different than what we bid, then, then you're chang, they're changing the contract, and I don't think you're... and I don't think you really need to do that, especially at this late time in the construction season. If you, if you award, if you award the contract tonight, we will do that portion of the project, probably, you will probably know the answer to the phase two portion of the project before we get done with phase one. And there'll be plenty of time for notification of the council to do whatever they want to do. My, my suggestion is try to split that thing up into two, changes to the whole thing, and probably, in my experience bidding work, would cause a rebidding process for phase two, you don't need to do all that. Just a suggestion.
Counsel, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bozen?
I, I don't, I certainly get into, uh, uh, rebidding a contract, uh, later this year, for sure.
Mr. Morrissey?
I didn't understand that, uh, uh, Councilman Bozen cut out, I couldn't hear what he said.
Uh, Mr. Morrissey? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Dakhavich said if, if we break it into two phases, it would, it would require, uh, essentially require rebidding phase two. And I would not be in favor of re, rebidding phase two, but I would be in favor of that coming back before, before the council prior to starting phase two.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dewan?
My understanding is that they would come back to us, um, before starting phase two, but for notification only, they're not asking that we would have to approve it at that time, because if the funding is available, we've given the approval by virtue of approving this contract. Is that correct?
Jamie, Michelle. So, did we be, we'd be great, so, one, i, if you, you know, CFO talked a little bit earlier about, um, knowing exactly how this local option, all these things are going to pan out. So we know there's money to do this first phase. If there's not money to do the second phase, there's a consensus that we're not going to do it if there's not any money. Uh, Mr. Dakhavich knows that, uh, Jamie knows that, and that's why, um, Mr. Bozen is also wants to know exactly where we're at, at, at that particular point, after we have phase one. So Jamie, Michelle, and whoever's going to come back and give us an update after phase one, exactly where we're at financially, and if we have the financial means, which I think we probably will, but just in case, give an update to let you know whether we do or whether we don't to do phase, uh, two. But it's an understanding, if they, if, if, if we don't receive enough money coming for this local option, I'm hearing, and Mr. Dakhavich, if you're not hearing the same thing, let me know, but if there's no dollars, we're not going to do this project, like in phase. Is that the general understanding, Michelle, Mr. Dakhavich, and, uh, Jamie?
We're at least asking to delay it until there is enough money. I mean, that could be possibly even next spring, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. My suggestion would be to use something called a notice to proceed, um, that, so that would allow you, I believe, to go ahead and approve this contract tonight, and then we can do the secondary notice to proceed when we get to that point. And sometimes we have council approve those, sometimes we don't. So we could either just have a work session to talk about a funding update, but I think it's important to go ahead and award the contract as it was bid tonight. And then we have the agreement to discuss those other segments before they proceed.
Mayor, this is Jamie, um, I would agree with what Michelle just said, giving a notice to proceed for phase one and holding off on a notice to proceed for phase two until we come back to council at that point and give them an update on funding.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
The, the only unanswered question I have is I just want to find out if what Michelle had said and what Jamie agreed to, and what Mr. Dakhavich agreed to, that, do we need to put that as part of this resolution?
I think that would be fine. You could approve the contract subject to that.
Okay, so, do we need to add that language, Mr. Mayor and Kelly? Or is that just an understanding that the council and everybody has in the vote that we're about to take?
Uh, this is Marty from the legal department. Um, I, I think we should add some language to the resolution.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make a motion to amend, uh, uh, item number nine, the resolution on the Aspro contract to include the statement, "Subject to the provisions of the agreement, uh, between the contractor, CFO Weidner, and city engineer Jamie Knutson."
Second?
Uh, motion with second. Would, it, it, to Mr. Morrissey's point, would it be just more prudent to do a notice to, add a notice to proceed in there versus?
I kind of, um, this is a city clerk. Kind of think based off of some of the discussion, maybe more simple to put into the resolution that, something to the effect of that the city engineer will come back and have discussion with council, and a notice to proceed will be issued to the contractor in order to proceed with the second phase of the project.
I, I, I'll go along with that, Kelly, I'll second that one.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, so who was your second?
I was, Mayor.
Good, so it doesn't change the contract up, it just change our, changes the way we communicate, uh, to council and the assurances of moving forward, so, um, that amendment, uh, for that addition, is it a language, uh, for number nine? If we can have a roll call vote for that?
Sure, Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Dewan?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Eight and nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
This is Klein.
Number eight is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with.
I think we, I think we already, we already did it.
You mean ten?
Yeah, what we did is, uh, added maybe amendment to number nine, so if we're ready, um, we can do a roll call vote if we're ready.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on the, sir?
We already, we are on, on the wish part?
Mr. Morrissey's amendment?
Yep.
We already did it.
Crazy. And you agreed?
I gotta have some worth. So to eight, nine, and nine is, has Mr. Morrissey's, uh, uh, amendment. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Dewan?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Oh, yeah.
Number, number ten?
Now, number ten, Mr. Mayor.
This is Klein.
Okay. Number ten's a motion approving change order number one with Wood Roof Construction LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, for a net increase of $502.95 in conjunction with carpet replacement, airline passenger, terminal building improvements, Waterloo Regional Airport, project number nine dash one dash one nine zero at ALO, dash two hundred, Iowa DOT Aviation Bureau, contract number two oh six oh one, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second?
A motion has been made with the second, uh, conversation, question?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one, uh, just point of information, and it's, uh, in the reading of this, and when I had read some earlier, where you, where you have that project number, uh, Kelly, is that nine dash, is that a one, or is that an I?
I believe that's an I.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, well, I, I would hope that that could be corrected on the ones that I said, as well as on this one, then.
Yes.
Duly noted. Uh, any other questions? Madam, uh, is this a roll call?
Just a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second?
A motion has been made with the second, um, madam, uh, I mean, Mr. Uh, city attorney, are we doing that correctly?
Well, it's my opinion, Your Honor, that statutory grounds exist for the council to go into a closed session, yes.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, someone said something?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a point, and that is, do we get out of this Zoom and then go into another Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah, Kelly sent a, um, did you get the link?
No.
To the, um, to the, uh.
Well, I ha, I have another Zoom, I just wanted to make sure that that is how we're going to, we're going to actually disconnect and then reconnect.
Yeah, that's correct, you'll reconnect using the, um, Zoom meeting information I sent out this afternoon. Um, we'll continue recording in the council chambers, just so that there's continuity for the public, so that they can continue to see that we are in executive session and see when we come back out. When we come back out of executive session, you'll need to rejoin this Zoom meeting information, so that we...
Oh, my God.
We have to come back into public to adjourn executive session. So we'll have to read, get onto this meeting.
I guess it's the equivalent of changing room, so we go in this Zoom room, come back to the other Zoom room, so. All right, um, Madam Clerk?
Um, Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Dewan?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you, I'll see you in the other Zoom room.